Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Approved the council agenda. Any additions or corrections?
And Mr. Mayor, we just had a couple of things. First of all, we're going to be adding an agenda item seven G, which is a gambling, pardon me, a liquor permit application from the Hutchinson J.C.'s. And then also, as I sent out yesterday, there's going to be revised seven E, the letter of support for the New Century Academy. That's all I have.
I'll make a motion to approve those with those additions.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the agenda with corrections and additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Implications from the O'Kite Covenant Church.
Good evening.
Evening.
My prayer for you today will actually come from the Book of Ephesians. I pray that he may grant you, according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with power in your inner being through his spirit, and that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith. I pray that you, being rooted and firmly established in love, may be able to comprehend with all the saints what is the length and width and height and depth of God's love, and to know Christ's love that surpasses knowledge, so that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. And I pray that you're able to carry out your duties diligently. Pray all this in his name. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, with pleasure, with allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? We do have a resolution under there, Resolution Number One Five One Four Eight, Resolution Accepting Donations From the Village Ranch To The Hutchinson Fire Department, two thousand dollars for the gear dryer project. Motion to accept. Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to accept the donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. This, the community service to the city. I don't know if you guys noticed that the house lot in Twins are out clearing drains again.
I just saw them walking up here.
So, they actually go around clearing ice and snow away from the drains, so the water don't puddle up in the street. So, kudos to them. They did that last year, and they're hard at it again today, so.
Good job.
Public comment. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward. All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless something's pulled off for discussion. A is consideration for approval of short-term gambling license to the Shady Lanes Sportsman's Club on June nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand twenty, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. B is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Upper Midwest Alice Chalmers Club from July twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. E is approval of authorizing Crow River Winery to dispense liquor at the McCloud County Fairgrounds on April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Minted Tina Event on August fifteenth, two thousand twenty, for the Minnesota Garlic Festival. D is consideration for approval of Resolution Number One Five One Five Zero, Resolution Adopting Facts and Finding of Facts and Reasons for Approval of a Lot Split at Eight Eighty-Five Highway Seven West, with favorable planning commission recommendation. E is consideration for approval of letter of support for the New Century Academy. And F is claims of appropriation contract payments. And G is J.C.'s.
Temporary liquor license for March fourteenth at the fairgrounds.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Should we formally acknowledge this revise?
Sure, if you want to pull that off and just talk about it for a second.
Sure. Okay, that would be E will pull off. Steve?
Yep.
Chad, you're going to approve the balance?
Yep.
And that was a motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. E, letter of support.
So, in your packet was this letter of support at New Century Academy, and New Century Academy affiliated building company was asking the city for its support for the New Century Academy is applying for financing so they can purchase their existing building from its current landlord. And the letter that was contained in your packet didn't specifically set out that the application actually is being made by the building arm of New Century Academy, which is a separate entity called the New Century Academy Affiliated Building Company. So, the revised letter that's before you this afternoon contains an introductory provision that better clarifies that the applicant is the affiliated building company arm of New Century Academy. So, just for clarification's sake.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. No public hearing, communications, the Planning, Zoning, Building Department Annual Report. Miss?
Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. I'll get my presentation pulled up here. Just give me one second. So, in front of you this evening, I have a short presentation to talk about our two thousand nineteen annual report for the Planning, Zoning, Building Department. If you have questions as we're going through, certainly let me know. Otherwise, at the end, there's opportunity for questions as well. With that, I'll start off on building permits. You can see a little bit of a history of the building permits that we've had this, the last ten years or so. Two thousand nineteen, we had again around just under nine hundred. You'll notice in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, there was a higher percentage. That was because of the hailstorm we had. Otherwise, it's fairly consistent, the amount of building permits we've had over here the last probably ten years or so. The valuation is where things change quite a bit, depending on the project load we have. As you can see, the last three years here have been very high. Last year, two thousand nineteen, we were just under forty-seven million, which is again a very good amount. Two thousand seventeen was high. That's when the school projects were built. And the last few years, there's just been a good mix of various projects that have brought that valuation up. As you can see, coming out of the Great Recession, the numbers were depressed quite a bit. Prior to that, if this graph were to go back, you'd see some numbers that were close to what they were in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, but I believe even the two thousand eighteen, nineteen numbers are higher than some of the ones previously. Inspections, this kind of gets into the complexity of the projects, depending on what's going on. Two thousand nineteen, we've had our highest inspection volume that we've had in the last number of years, over thirty-five hundred. A lot of that is attributed to the state projects, such as the hospital project, and, you know, the school projects when they were going on, and then just the amount of construction with the multifamily units that are going on in town, Highfield Apartments, Century Court Apartments, and then the single-family homes. So, that number was up for us this last year quite a bit. On that note, you know, last year, we had three inspectors. Back last fall, we had one of our inspectors resigned, left to go to a metro area community. We haven't backfilled that inspector position. We don't plan on doing that if we can manage our workload with the staff we have. Talk a little bit about new unit construction in terms of single-family homes. Last year, we had twenty-three new homes built in Hutchinson. Again, you can see the chart here. Ever since kind of we pulled out of the recession, we've been pretty consistent in between twenty and about thirty-five homes built. I think probably the bigger issue on that, on this, is it could be higher, but there's not a lot of labor available to build these homes. Then also, in the existing home market, people aren't really wanting to move. So, unless we're bringing, you know, a lot of new families into the community, this number's not really going up. I think it could be a lot higher if there was some more movement in the existing home market. Otherwise, you know, in the last few years, we've taken off well over one hundred and fifty vacant lots. I believe we're at about one hundred and sixty-five or so vacant lots left in the community, and even that number might be lower than that because you look at some of these developments that have been vacant for, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. Now, what's the chances that those lots are actually going to develop? Are people just owning those because they want open space next door? They're really not looking to develop those lots anymore. So, I think here in the next few years, we're going to have to think about what do we do for future platted lots in the community, and how does that look, and what areas are developable. And I think we have a pretty good plan set forth in our comprehensive plan, and some of the water and sewer infrastructure plans as well, to service development as necessary. Just a little bit of a highlight of our, the new construction that we saw within the community, again, that's about fourteen million dollars worth of new construction that was done, five million dollars in new homes. Woodstone was about almost five million, Highfield, three point one million, and then the shops at Hutchinson, two point one, one point two million, excuse me. Commercial industrial additions and remodels, this is where some of the numbers are rather large. The Hachel House project was about fourteen million, a big project at Warrior, four and a half million, and then various smaller projects, remodel type projects are listed as well. So, again, a fair amount of activity going on last year. Any questions on kind of the building side of things before I kind of switch gears into the more of the planning and zoning side of things? Okay, good. Planning and zoning, obviously, the role there is to make sure that, you know, land use approvals, conditional use permits, site plan approvals, things like that are done for all these building projects. Couple of the other highlights we did this year was we finalized our scanning projects. So, we have all our alphabetical files scanned now, as well as our address files. It's been nice to have that all available electronically. We're still working on rolling out the actual program so all of our staff members can get into that system to access our files, but several of us have the program and are able to do that. Airport zoning, that's ongoing, working on that, working with John Olson, public work staff on that. It's been going well. And then, a little bit of a, kind of our processing of applications. We had nineteen applications in front of the Planning Commission. That would be for conditional use permits, variances, site plan approvals, et cetera. And then, land use application would be for like patios and utility sheds and those types of zoning reviews. We had one hundred and fifty-two of those. And then, building permits for, you know, additions, remodels, things like that, seventy-seven, and then sign permits and various meetings. You can just see some of what we worked on last year in that regard.
Dan, can you kind of talk a little more about the airport zoning? Got to deal with the crosswind.
Sure. Yeah, so the-
What, dealing with the county, too?
Yeah, so we're working on a, a couple of years ago, the airport did an airport master plan, and one of the things identified through that process was a crosswind runway, and that was set forth in the master plan. So, part of the state requirements for that are is if it's in the master plan for the airport, we have to zone for it. So, they identified the, these areas A, B, and C for zoning. Basically, that allows certain things in those zones, and it's again the east-west crosswind portion of the runway. And we've developed a zoning ordinance for that with the help of our consultants. We're in the process of updating that. And we're working jointly with the county, as well as the townships, because the city has to adopt that ordinance, as well as the township, which gets done, their zoning gets done by the county board. So, we're working with those folks on that. We had two public hearings last week on that airport zoning ordinance. Now, it goes back to the state for kind of a final review, and once they stamp it, it'll come back to the council and then the county board for their final approval.
The hearings go?
Very well. We tried to get out information in advance. We only actually had one person come to the two meetings to comment or ask questions. And the idea is they, they set it up so that we try to impact as the least land as we can. So, there's really not a lot of impact to existing structures, a little bit on the east side, but they're kind of grandfathered in on what they're allowed.
West side's about five acres, right? I came up with the one landowner, had about five acres where he couldn't really do it.
Yeah, and it was in an agricultural area, and I don't know that there was building plans there per se, but right now, that's in Zone A, and that would be allowed to basically just be farmland at this point.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Twenty twenty outlook, looks like the local economy continues to be strong. There's a fair amount of activity out there. Usually at this time of year, I do have a list of more projects that I know are going to happen this year. I think there's just a little bit, not want to say uncertainly, but I think people are still planning their projects for the summer. Some of the ones we know about, Marshalls, Prince of Peace, that was actually a twenty twenty project. They started some excavation in two thousand nineteen, but the bulk of that's twenty twenty. The school has several projects, and then we're expecting similar residential construction that we've seen. Actually, in just January, we issued five new permits for homes. So, in the middle of winter, that's a fair amount of new homes permits being issued. And then, I know in talking to Miles, there's some potential for some industrial development happening as well. One of the things we might think about as a, as a city and as a group is that commercial land, we're just, there's not a lot of it available anymore. The easy commercial land is already developed. If you look at the south end of the community, you know, and the projects we've had, the developable lots are basically all developed. There's maybe a couple there. That's going to be something that, in order for that commercial to grow, we're going to need more land for that to happen. That service with infrastructure typically, again, that's a developer-initiated process where they, we look at bringing, extending infrastructure and things like that. There's obviously land there, it just needs to be serviced. And then also, as we go forward, maybe Highway seven east starts to get a little bit more development pressure because of the lack of availability on Highway fifteen south. So, there's some things to think about. Rental inspections, just real quick on that. Obviously, as this group knows, the building department's been doing this for several years now. We really focus on life safety issues. We're not trying to get into everything. It's mainly the high level of life safety issues. About nineteen hundred rental units in the community, and those units are inspected every three years. Benefits of the program, improved safety for tenants, landlords, and managers, increased property values, and then we have documentation of the condition of rental units to make sure that the codes are being met. And this program continues to, I think, be a very good program for our tenants, and I think we're getting more buy-in as well from our landlords as time goes on with consistency. There's less and less what I'll call complaints that we get regarding this program every year. And then the amount of inspections, now every year, we're right around seven hundred, between six and seven hundred unit inspections that we, we do for that program. Rental properties, we looked at close to two hundred. Many of those have multiple units in those. You know, you'll notice a hundred and thirteen of those, a hundred and ninety-eight required reinspection. You know, our thought is that as we do this, we hope to get that number lower, but it seems like some of these things are just, if you don't stay on top of it, people aren't keeping up with various smoke detectors, CO detectors, clutter, and things like that. And unfortunately, it seems like, you know, some of the items are numbers that went down, but some of them, we keep seeing reinspections needed. And part of that is, is these units are getting older as well. Again, six hundred and fifty-one total units were inspected, a hundred and twenty-three had no violations. Just a overview of kind of the main things we see, smoke detectors, electrical system issues, carbon monoxide detectors, plumbing systems, chimneys, kind of a variety of things that we notice. So, with that, it's kind of the overview of the department. Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, with the rental inspections, that single-family homes are rented out are supposed to be inspected as well, right?
Yeah, actually, you know, we have about two hundred and sixty-five just single-family homes that are rented out as rental units, and those need to be inspected as well. And we find that, I don't know, there's just as many violations or potential issues in those as are our department buildings. I know some folks think that, why do we need to inspect single-family homes? But there's issues in those, too, that need to be addressed.
You talk about smoke detectors, it's always probably the top thing, and, you know, that people are pulling batteries out or something.
Sure.
Are there many cities that have adopted ordinances requiring the sealed, ten-year sealed detectors?
Not that-
Detectors, yeah. Is that something?
There's a lot of them now that are hardwired in, too.
And, you know, from the code perspective, the code is just saying you have to have smoke detectors. There's various ways to accommodate that. I don't know of a lot of places that have required that you do that, because I think most people think, you know, whatever way the property owner wants to handle that, they can. It's really up to them. But part of it is, is that, you know, the property owner's only in the building, you know, maybe a couple times a year to look at things, and then, you know, the tenant's got to be somewhat responsible for making sure some of those things are done as well. And some folks, unfortunately, you know, we get there, and they've, they've got them all pulled out, you know. They take them out because they don't want to deal with it. And quite frankly, that's a problem.
Well, that's why if they're sealed in there, then it makes it a little harder to take out.
Yeah, we've seen them even taped over and covered with Saran Wrap, and you name it.
Depends what kind of cooks they are.
Yeah.
Do you know what the price is of the ones that go for ten years that are sealed in? Is that a real expensive item? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but generally speaking, I don't think they're, they're outrageous for what you're getting. No.
I did do a search online over the weekend, and there's a few states that have required it, and some of the larger cities. The one closest that popped up was in Madison, Wisconsin, and see with the college and a lot of the rentals that they have probably play a role in that, but, I don't know, just thought I'd ask about it.
Yeah. And just as an aside component of all the inspections we do, we think that the rental inspection program is very important. I mean, it's obvious life safety things, and, you know, we're seeing things and getting those corrected, that there's a lot of value for that program and to the tenants, as well as the landlords, what they're getting for that, you know, twenty-dollar annual fee that we think goes a long ways.
Well, I do know that, I mean, I know some people who rent, and they rent a home, and they're very satisfied with the program. They said they think it's really nice that our city is doing that. They feel safer in a house when they know that they have all those things that are up there on your inspection list, you know.
Yeah, it's nice to show the list there because it's more, it's pretty extensive variety of things that look-
Sure. And we've tried to get into more detail of what we're running into, too, in terms of violations, so we can kind of see, okay, you know, the smoke detectors is always high, but they're always different ones, too. It's not the same ones all the time. It's just a matter of, you know, just like at your own house, right? When they go out, you have to replace it, and sometimes you forget, and it's the way it goes.
Well, I think with the, with the college out here, it's kind of nice for the parents to know that when their kids come to our town, that when they rent someplace, that, you know, we do have this inspection to make sure that the smoke detectors and everything else is up to code, so.
On that note, just, we have about forty-eight units of apartments above Main Street buildings, and, you know, today there was a fire in Alexandria, above Main Street, and, you know, those old buildings, obviously.
They're all connected.
They're connected, but it's very, the smoke detectors and CO is very important for life safety, and that's why we're looking at these things.
Anything else for Dan?
You mentioned Marshalls, is the mall, you know, the mall parking lot and stuff, would that require permits, and as that gets developed?
Yeah, I've been told by the, the company that's doing the work that they are going to be improving the parking lot, and they'll be coming in to get a permit for that. I don't know the details of that. Obviously, that's spring work, but that, we, our understanding is, is that the building will be obviously remodeled and redone, and then the parking lot will be improved. But I'm not sure what extent that is, if it's the entire parking lot, or just the front, or the driveways. I don't know yet.
Sure. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
New business, consideration for approval of Resolution Number One Five One Four Nine, Resolution Supporting Capital Improvement and Betterment of the Otter Lake and Campbell Lake and the South Fork of the Crow River and other contributaries to the lakes. Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, I'll kick it off, then we can turn it over to John, excuse me, Mayor, first here.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay, Ken, how about you?
Yeah, good enough. No, what we have in front of you is a formal resolution, just reiterating your support of our river and lakes improvement project that we're pursuing state bonding funds on. And what's also included within the packet was the, the actual bond bill language. It has been slightly revised, so there was a handout this evening. I believe Councilmember Cook is more familiar with this than, than anybody, and I think we're up to date here with what's been handed out. So, you know, that ties directly to the, the resolution that is being proposed for council's approval this evening. The resolution also just touches on some general background as we've developed this, this concept, this improvement approach. And with that, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Steve, at this point?
The major change really in the bill language, which is alluded to at the resolution, is the city's contribution to it. Originally, last year's bill said no non-state money was required for, you know, so no city contribution. Even though it set aside the five hundred thousand, it wasn't really recognized. And talking to some of the leadership in St. Paul and the capital investment committees, they said, you know, frankly, that was a problem. Probably was an issue with our application, you know, to be included in the governor's bill as well. So, so the revised language talks about that we are, do have a local contribution. It's that five hundred thousand, plus we tied in the Linden Park Stormwater Pond work that's being done, because that directly affects the sediment that's going into the river. And then also recognize the other improvements that have been done as well. So, so they know that we've got skin in the game in this whole project, and so I think everything will, hopefully, will work out.
Yep. And John's here, he can answer any specific project development questions, but really where the, the need for the resolution is coming from was a request from the governor's office as they prepared Governor Walz's bonding bill. We weren't included, but we were contacted by a staff person from his office, and they encouraged us to formalize council's support of these efforts, so.
And that includes above and beyond that five hundred K initially. That resolution's also identified in this one as well. So, not just referring, we provided them that initial five hundred K designation to the project, the governor's office that is. But yeah, to take it a step farther and actually spell these different things out, align that with what the bond request is and the language associated with that. I thought it was definitely a worthwhile effort to do. And anything in the future moving forward, if it's this project or bonding, bonding dollars requested, or LCCMR in the future, or other avenues that we go down, this would be really handy to have in the back pocket to be able to hand out and distribute to say council supports this. And, yeah, it was just a effort to really kind of solidify the city's position on the project. solidify, uh, the city's position on the project, and, um, be able to distribute that as needed. Um, likewise, too, another thing I've done is I've also reached out to Ryan Freitag with the Soil and Water Conservation District to see about them providing a letter of support for the project and the various projects that may be included as part of these efforts as well. Um, still waiting to hear back from them, but, um, something I'm guessing that they'd be willing to do. Uh, a lot of these things that we've identified as part of, uh, these project components include the exact type of efforts that the Soil and Water Conservation District promotes and, um, helps support as well, so I don't think that should be a problem, but, I mean, anything we can do along those lines, uh, that goes a long ways.
Understanding that, you know, where this is going to go then as part, you know, would there be value in, whereas, that talks about the previous projects and even the current one, you know, with the, uh, Stormwater Pond at Linden Park, but just include the value of those improvements, um, in the resolution, so-
The actual cost of them, or-
Yeah.
The benefits, and we tried to-
The cost, I guess.
I guess, yeah, we tried to identify the benefits, I guess, holistically from a water quality standpoint, or recreation improvements, those types of things, but, yeah, we didn't include the actual costs associated with it. I'm sure we could revise that, I'm not sure if, how interested or necessary that is, but, um, I know the bond references those as well, so.
Or do you include a copy of this, or the-
For, as a reference, yeah, I don't know how you do that as part of a resolution, I don't see why you couldn't. I'll defer to Mark on that one. Can you have an attachment in the resolution?
Certainly.
Or just send it with anyway?
Yeah, yeah, could do that, too.
Have to be formal, I guess.
Right. And similarly, too, the original resolution for that five hundred K, yeah, that would probably be attached to it as well, you know, just referencing is one thing, but actually providing the documents, so that's really what they're looking for.
Well, yeah. Would be nice to be included in their bonding bill, and that's where this copy of the bill would be helpful.
Likewise, too, when you're talking to folks about the bill, or the bonding requests to be able to provide them a resolution as well, so it kind of works both ways.
I would, uh, send a copy to our legislators as well as the governor's office, it would be good.
Would it be beneficial to talk about all the retention ponds that we have in the city, that not contributing to the sediment that goes into the river? Because I mean, we got, I think we have a lot of ponds comparing to most cities, you know.
The city manages and operates over fifty of them, so, and there's a hundred and ten plus throughout the community, and-
Well, I think the more, the more you put down that we are doing to, you know, keep the sediment out, I think that helps.
Well, and I think it's also worth noting, too, there's, it goes way beyond that as well, um, not just from how many ponds we have, to how much we spend annually on stormwater infrastructure, operations and maintenance, our wastewater plant, what that does for water quality improvements within the river basin as well. Um, where do you stop, I guess, is kind of the in line question with that as well, I mean, we-
Street sweeping.
And part, part of, part of that-
I think we gotta go back, we're, we're resoluteing in support of this effort, not-
Yeah.
To establish everything we've done for the last twenty years, I guess.
And my guess would be, Gary, and this is kind of, I guess, my perspective on that point in general, is this opens the door to a conversation. Um, when you engage in those conversations, we can certainly allude to all those other things as well, I mean, that's part of it, I mean, that, this is really just kind of the Cliff Notes version of that. We can certainly add those things, I'm not saying that we can't, um, but, like I said, there's, there's lots and lots and lots of things and examples that we've had over time that we could definitely highlight as well.
Like what Steve alluded to, though, is, you know, when you show that you have skin in the game, I think that goes a long ways, you know, that, that we are-
And, and we really, one, so as an example, when they did the bus tour, that was one thing we highlighted, was what we spent annually on stormwater, what we spent annually on wastewater, and those, those dollars, those components, those things that we do, um, were highlighted, and, like I said, it's definitely something that's worth knowing, something that's worth conversating about. It's just a matter of finding the right time to plug those things in. Some people, you, you tell them a number and their eyes glaze over, but you tell them it benefits fish and birds, and all of a sudden their eyes light up, you know? Like, some don't care about one or the other, and it's really about trying to know what message people want to hear, and then tailoring that and crafting it to them, so.
Yeah. All right, sounds good. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. Thanks, John. Governance, so we have the Hutchinson Library Board minutes from December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, Planning Commission minutes from January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for January two thousand twenty, and Planning, Zoning and Building Department Quarterly Report. All righty, uh, Chief Gibson, do you have anything else for us tonight?
At the risk of stealing your thunder, Mayor Furseer-
Go ahead. Just go ahead, I'll, I'll talk about it anyway, so.
I just want to acknowledge, uh, the high school wrestling team qualifying for the state tournament, and they'll be leaving tomorrow, uh, they'll, I'm not sure of the time, sometime tomorrow afternoon after school-
Let me guess who's leading them out.
And, uh, we'll be providing an escort as well as the fire department, but, um, we'll be, I think the escort will be, uh, traveling down Main Street, so if anybody wants to come out and show their support, that would be the time to do it. That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Dan, you have anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
John? Yeah. Got the sweet street sweeper out already, right?
Yeah, it's gone pretty quick. Uh, one update, Sustainability Committee, there's another person interested, as you're aware, Mayor, um, uh, waiting to get the letter of interest form from them, but once we get that, we should have our five, and we'd be able to move it forward, so, uh, more to come on that front shortly, hopefully. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Kent?
Yes, sir, uh, two items. First and foremost, wanna recognize Tim Gradke's efforts, he actually testified down at a House Committee hearing on the flushable wipes, uh, issue last week, and, uh, Tim did a great job, was well-prepared, uh, yeah, I think he, it was much appreciated by people from the league, people from-
Did he take one of the valves down with them?
Oh, yeah, he had laminated, lots of laminated photos, yep, going around the rooms, so.
Well, he started dragging it in, but they stopped them.
Yeah, he might turn into the poster child of this issue, so.
If he keeps it up.
Something to be known for. But no, thanks, uh, to Tim for his efforts, he, he takes that issue very, very serious, as you guys are aware of, so. Otherwise, uh, Main Street, uh, Highway fifteen bids, uh, this Friday morning, finally, um, nine, nine-thirty, uh, they get received down in St. Paul at Mendat's central office. And we should learn, I, I would hope a little bit shortly thereafter, at least what the low number is, and, uh, whose number it is, but then it'll take Mendat three to four weeks to, to formalize, uh, uh, the acceptance of the bid on their end, and, uh, we'll also be working concurrently to, uh, uh, finalize the assessment process on our end during the month of March. That's it.
Thank you. Chad?
I don't have anything extra.
Mary?
No, it's caucus night, though, so if you want to go, get out and get, get out there.
You gonna go talk smart?
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
And primaries next week, right, so get out there.
All right. Dave?
Oh, I have nothing, thank you.
All right. Steve?
I just wanted to congratulate the girls hockey team, they won the consolation championship and, uh, and South St. Paul, who was kind of a nemesis a few years ago with them, so that was a nice victory, and then the boys play for the section championship tomorrow night, so against Litchfield. Good luck to them, and congratulations to the girls.
I second that.
Mr. Sabora?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Oh, my gosh. All right. I gotta cover them all.
Scott lost.
I'm gonna cover them all, I know you, even though you guys stole some of my thunder. Showstoppers, they participated in state, too, so, congratulations to them. Uh, boy swimming, section champs. The wrestling team, section champs, uh, their wrestling Thursday against Foley, I believe, right? Uh, plus, they sent, uh, four individuals to state, Pierce at one thirteen, Luthen's at one fifty-two, Nelson at one eighty-two, and Kerth at two twenty. Uh, Steve mentioned the boys hockey, uh, section finals against, uh, Dassel Cocado Litchfield, and that's in St. Peter, so good luck to them. Girls hockey, consolation champs, as you mentioned. Um, actually, congratulations to Ms. Honky and Ms. Ladwick, uh, they were selected to the all tournament team, and actually, Ms. Honky was, uh, named one of the top thirty players in the state, so congratulations to her, uh, she set a few records down at state, and, um, they had a great year. Uh, all of our, all of our teams have been doing really good, so, uh, congratulations to all of them, and good luck to those that are participating this weekend.
Appreciate you running it all.
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, when you guys start picking on me, I was like, well, I'll, I'll get them all, I'll get them all, so. Um, with that, uh, good luck to them, and, uh, I guess we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried.
Yeah, you did.